Okay, it's seven o'clock. Welcome on your watch to the Wester Planet, we're beginning September 2. Would you join in and pledge your allegiance?
Yes.
The allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Sean?
Here.
Mr. Posel?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mistle?
Present.
Mrs. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Kim?
Here.
Okay. Let's see. We're wanting to start. We did have Fairlife Coca-Cola Project. It was supposed to be the third item on the agenda today, but they are not prepared to do it yet, so what we've done in lieu of that is we've asked Hagueners to come in with their proposed project for just a review, just a sketch plan, just show what you're doing and stuff at this point, and we'll kind of speed jump a little bit down the road, I guess. Okay, so with that, we can start. Now, the first one was Puffin Stuff, and I don't see them here. And I, all right, we'll wait till the end of the meeting. We heard this before, we finally denied the application the last night. Well, now they're here again, I don't know why, but, all right, we'll wait till the end of the meeting when we can make a decision on that. So the next one is Bird Physical Therapy Sign. This is located at 847 Holt Road. The applicant, Chris Lesniak, and Chris McCaffrey of Aldrich Sign Company requesting a sign approval for a 30 square foot mounted facade sign for a physical therapy business on a 4.89 acre parcel on the designated parcel name. And this is located in an OP, which is an office park under Section 265-7 of the Town of Worcester. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Board. Andrew Warren, Aldrich Sign Company. Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward request. There is an existing three-by-ten dock sign already on the building, and all we're looking to do is simply change the face weight on it to, as you can see, for a physical therapy sign.
Same location?
I'm sorry?
The same location?
Correct. Nothing's moving, box is staying the same, we're just looking to put the new face in.
All right, anybody? No?
Is the sign lit?
Yes, it's internally lit.
Anybody any concerns or?
Does the white will figure out?
Uh, the whole sign will be lit, but the blue will be translucent.
So the white's flat?
No, the whole sign face will be, I apologize, the whole sign face will be lit, just like how the other one was before.
Should be just your letters or numbers should be lit. The white should be darkened so the white doesn't show the light at night. The idea was to always tone them down, and that was the way of doing it. Who's doing your sign?
We, Aldrich Sign Company.
Okay.
And that's just the material, it's a polycarbonate, so it does a lot of light pass through it. So we could potentially, if the board wanted, but figure out a way to put a block out.
That's what they've done in the past, I don't know.
But that's not what the previous sign was. The previous sign just had...
See, that's probably something they did later, Gash knows, you know, but actually they called even calls for that, yeah. Okay, so if you can do that, that would be great.
Okay.
All right? Okay, anybody anything else? Want to do a seat there?
Town of Worcester Planet Board, considered a request by applicant Patrick Lesniak and Chris McCaffrey of Aldrich Sign Company to construct a 30 square foot building mounted facade sign for Bird Physical Therapy located at 874 Holt Road, 4.89 acre parcel, having the SPO number 079.08-1-111. The Planet Board classifies the proposed action as a Type II action under Section 617.5C9 of the State Department of Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Second, yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
And motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for Bird Physical, for Bird Physical located at 847 Holt Road, for a 30 square foot building mounted facade sign with the white on the sign, should the paint, is that the correct word, be okay, to block out the light as presented.
Second.
Motion to sit all in?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set, thank you. Okay. Application was at Hagueners?
The other side.
What's that?
For the side.
Oh, he's here? Wow. All right, we'll go back to the beginning. Puffin Stuff? Yeah. Puffin Stuff Smoke Shop Sign located at 950 Ridge Road. The applicant is Mohamed Al Salafi, and he's requesting a sign approval to allow installation of a 24.8 square foot building mounted sign within the Worcester Square Plaza on a 37.91 acre parcel with the designated number, location, is located in an HC High Intensity Commercial District under Section 265-7 of the Town of Worcester. Yes, sir? Would you see a final error?
Was there a question?
No, wasn't a question. We've been waiting for you for a lot of months.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think like we came to the wrong meeting.
Okay. All right, so you put the sign up at the front, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes.
The storefront sign, yep.
Now, is this sign lit? What's the deal with it?
Yeah, I believe...
Mr.?
Yes?
Is that a lit, is the sign lit?
Mm-hmm.
So it's lit from inside, right?
From the inside.
They're all individual letters?
Mm-hmm.
All letters?
Mounted to a weigh weight?
Uh-huh.
The weigh weight mounted to the wall.
All right. All right. Do you ask this meets code okay for size?
Yes.
All right. Okay, anybody?
The only other thing is the facade, before the sign goes up, is the sign already out? It's not out?
It's not. It's been down for three months.
Okay.
Since they got the, like, the notice from you guys. We had it down, we took it down.
Okay. That's the only other thing, is when the signs are replaced sometimes, the facade, you can see the old sign improvements, we're just making sure the front of the building is transparent, it is behind the sign, it just appears transparent.
Well, how about...
Okay, I agree, can I ask you a question?
Are you proposing a panel in the monument sign for the whole plaza and the belt?
No.
No.
There was one there at one point, and that was taken down, so you're not going to have that back in?
If they want to, like, should we apply for another permit?
For what's he, this is regarding to what?
My name is...
I mean, you have...
Out on the road?
Right.
No, yeah, I don't think you should have to get another permit, because that's, that sign was there for tenants in there. You are a tenant in there, I don't see any issue with it.
Right.
You put, as long as it's in, not a separate sign, it goes in...
It's not a separate, it's a...
Just a placard that goes in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, were you there, you guys all right with that?
Yeah, right. It goes in the sign.
Yeah, sure, okay. Now, you get the approval from the owner for that?
Uh, we got approved from the owner of the plaza.
Oh, you get from, yeah. Okay, then you're all set with that then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, Eric, we're going.
Town of Worcester Planet Board considered a request by applicant Mohamed Al Salafi, has to a 24.8 square foot building mounted sign within the Worcester Square Plaza located at 950 Ridge Road on a 37.91 acre parcel, having the SPO number 079.15-1-1.312. The Planet Board classifies the proposed action as a Type II action under Section 617.5C2 of the State Department of Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, and motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And motion for the sign approval?
I'll make a motion for Puffin Stuff Smoke Shop Sign located at 950 Ridge Road, with 24.8 square foot building mounted sign, which is eliminated, and also for a monument sign as presented.
Okay, and motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now you're all set. Now you go put your sign up again.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good day.
You too, thank you.
Okay, now we can go to Hagueners again. Hagueners Plaza, located at 964 Ridge Road. The applicant, Matt Tomlinson of Marathon Engineering, is requesting a sketch plan review associated with the proposed redevelopment of the former Hagueners Supermarket Plaza on 6.66 acres on the designated parcel, and is located in an HC, which is a High Intensity Commercial District, under 269.5 of the Town of Worcester. Matt?
Good evening. Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering, pretty civil engineers on the project. Al Hazelwood is the project architect. And then we've got various representatives of the ownership with us as well. We're excited to be here and appreciate the board bringing us to their agenda. We've had some initial discussion with staff who wanted to bring this to the board, because we do want to advance Planet Board approvals. We felt that sketch plan discussion, getting some feedback on what our plans are, would be of benefit to help us streamline the approval process as we come forward. We are looking to submit at the next deadline, which is about a week and a half, so we'll be back before this board relatively quickly, assuming that we're not headed in a complete wrong direction here. So, as mentioned, the property is at 964 Ridge Road, right down the street, northwest corner of Hard Road and Ridge Road. We're proposing some updates to the facade, which I'll turn over to Al in a couple minutes to talk through, but the site plan changes that we wanted to highlight for the board, and if you can see the cursor, is primarily focused at the front of the plaza, oriented to Hard Road. As you know, there's some vacancies within the upper level of the plaza, and the parking lot slopes very steeply from south to north, which causes some issues with ADA accessibility, parking in there as well. The majority of the parcel currently is paved with very little landscaping, so we're really looking to dress the plaza up, not just on the facade and for accessibility, but also adding some landscaping and islands with some traffic coming as well. So, you'll see a new green perimeter, a flattened access drive that brings vehicles to the rear of the parking versus it's right along the front, which allows for some cut-through traffic, which we'll be looking to avoid. And then the addition of a retaining wall to help lift up that lower northern portion of the plaza parking, so that folks can more easily walk to the front doors along the entirety of the facade. Those changes did necessitate or result in a loss of parking spaces. Right now, there's 308 parking spaces on the plaza. And so, in order to help alleviate that, and try to maintain as much parking as possible, we've reconfigured and restripped within the existing pavement limits, the lower parking, and are looking to provide some access or accessibility within the corner tower, whether stair, elevator, or combination of those, that would allow for overflow parking on the lower level to easily come up to that upper level on the plaza as well. So, and then I neglected to mention, there is one row of parking added within some green space on the lower level, just to get us closer. So the proposed number of spaces is 290 parking spaces in total at the plaza, within that loss of 18 spaces. We think that a mixed use development with multi-tenants is really gonna, that will be sufficient parking for it, number one. Number two, we've been able to add an awful lot of green to this plaza, which has some stormwater benefits, some beautification benefits, without losing very many spaces. So we think it really is going to be a great addition to that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Al to talk about the facade of the building.
Good evening. The upper piece, which we call the east building elevation, is the one that presents itself to Hard Road. We've taken the original building that has some small additions, some canopies, some loading docks and those type of things, and removed them, and raised the grade as Matt had said, to facilitate public pedestrian access into the plaza strip, and the store, the plaza itself can be broken up in numerous layouts. At this point, we have it somewhat phased in three or four layouts, depending on how you want to reference them. Over on the right-hand side, which would be the north, as I've indicated, that there's going to be probably a vertical elevator, but it would provide the access from the lower level of the site to the main level, so that, like Matt had said, we have access for folks who transfers the vertical elevation without somewhat of a hazard. And then we have turned the facade improvement around to the south, and had it wrap some of the front of the building to soften some of the harshness of just a flat building. And we've also added the stone veneer that we're going to propose further down towards where the loading dock is. On my drawing, it indicates that the loading dock on the side of the south will be modified, and it will be only for box trucks, shoulder box trucks. It would be meant for any kind of semi-trailer truck access. That loading dock will be towards, well, I guess, towards the northwest corner of the property. Any questions anyone might want to present?
At this point, I think it's moving along well. It looks good.
Okay.
The issue, that's why when we spoke, I mentioned about the loading dock, and you agreed to eliminate tractor trailers.
Yeah.
Because that has been a headache, with those guys parking in the middle of the road and everything, with the box trucks flying, and then the large trucks going around with that.
Yes, so the box trucks would be able to stage in that loading area without encroaching into traffic.
Absolutely.
And then tractor trailers can come down and loop around, and that can use the north portion. And, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Al. So, one of the other benefits with potentially users with not as heavy delivery as a grocery store or some others, we will expect a few less trucks delivery-wise as well, at least on the large side. So there'd be some benefits related to just how many delivery vehicles were queuing in the past up along the front, along Ridge Road there, and really help with the circulation.
The other issue, yeah, we spoke, I don't know what's going to be required for detention or anything on that site.
Yeah, so...
I don't know.
The stormwater requirements are if you reduce the, in your disturbance limits, which we're not disturbing all of the plaza, but the whole front for the most part. If you add 25% green space from what's there today, that satisfies all DTC stormwater requirements, and by extension, the town's annuals' formal requirements. So we will have that detailed for this board when we come back in, but I anticipate that if any stormwater treatment is required, it'll be relatively minimal, because of how much landscaping we're at.
That area that you showed to the north, where you've got like five, yeah, right there, that area, if nothing else, just a somewhat containment, like you have down in front of Tapal Bell and...
Yeah, there's some bio-retention areas.
We call those detentions.
Bio-retention areas, yeah, yeah.
And they look good, too, so you still have a decorative setting, maybe, if need be anyways, okay.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions on this?
On the northeast floor, there's the liquor store. The liquor store is still going to be there.
I think...
Yeah, that addition will be coming off of the plaza.
Yeah, that portion of the liquor store that's currently contained right at the north corner, northeast corner, is going to be removed, and the upper portion of it, if you follow the sequence, will become, will be in addition to the main floor. And then we will be squaring off the building, so that there was no projections towards the east.
Right now, along this facade, there's about an eight-foot grade change from the existing grocery store entry to where the liquor store is, so we're looking to fill on that entire facade to have a level, level frontage to the plaza.
How about the, what corner is, the corner is this? South, southeast corner?
Yeah.
Is that whole parking lot going to be, because that parking lot down there goes a bit down the hill, is that all going to be flat as well?
Down the hill in this area here, I'm sorry, is that what you're talking, northeast?
Southeast.
Southeast.
So right at Ridge Road, in the main intersection there, where it cuts off to shoe cracks? I'm trying to envision that, doesn't that slope down as well? That area is not flat enough.
It does slope down a bit, and right now, the pavement actually goes right up to the sidewalk along Ridge, and there's very little separation along Hard Road as well. So we pulled the parking area back towards the building a little bit, in order to be able to slope up the lawn, just a touch in that area. So it will fall away from the building, just like a normal parking lot, or anywhere else, but it'll be much flatter than it is today.
Okay, I was trying to picture how you would make that, because it's a lot of stuff.
Just takes money, that's it.
And money is a lot of dirt, and a lot of...
Yes, there will be a substantial change to the front of that plaza.
You have on the west side, I feel there's a slope to that.
At the rear of the plaza?
Yeah, on the west side of the building.
It's relatively flat at the lower level, yeah.
That's where the U-LB cross-country car wash is.
It's flat, that kind of climb into a room where you're going to...
Still going to have room for the cross-country, you know, the car wash back there?
There'll be plenty of room back there, yeah. Yeah, we're really not changing the pavement limits at all, just restriping it, maybe some, maybe some new lighting, we'll see where it fits. Only real change to the parking again is the row there, just to make up some of what we've lost on the, on the front. I'm sorry, you can't see what I'm looking at, but there'll be an additional row of parking in the, right along the front of Warren's. Of Warren's, we're putting some parking right along the frontage of the store for convenience and ADA accessibility as well, right in here.
Now, is Warren's staying there, or will Warren be there through the construction?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else, any questions or?
This is fantastic.
Yeah, it's great.
Some fill company is going to be very happy.
Someone company?
Some fill company.
Yeah.
You got a pile of dirt over, over by, when they dug up Hard Road. Must say all that dirt over there, you got a huge pile of it. I mean, you have to receive it before...
I was going to say, need to add a pile a hundred times a month.
Is that what that's for? Like you said, this is a huge pile over there. All right, we're all set, I guess then.
Great, appreciate the board's time, we'll be back before you see me.
Okay, good luck. Okay. And, let's see, the next application is 457 Pineville Lane In-Law Edition, located at 457 Pineville Lane. Applicant, Robert Jennifer DeVos. Requesting accessory apartment waiver for overall size associated with construction, a 916 square foot handicap accessible in-law addition to existing single-family residence on .45 acres under designated parcel, which is located in an R3 single-family residential district under Section 350-50 of the Town of Worcester. Yes, sir?
How are you, Dave Ogden? I'm a general contractor, JDC Construction. The plan is to hopefully build this for Bob DeVos and his wife and his mother-in-law, who is presently looking to move into this proposed addition, which goes beyond your square footage requirement to the common. Essentially, what this is, a handicap accessible in-law apartment, have a small kitchenette, small handicap bathroom, a bedroom in a living space. There is access to the family through a doorway, so they can share meals that they so desire, but at the same time, she can have her own space. We looked into meeting and conforming with the square footage requirement. We, the customer actually paid an architect a due way drawing, and we went through the process to see if the square footage that would conform would work with what we were looking to do, and it became too cumbersome and not actually a comfortable living space. It was very difficult, we really couldn't give her the square footage she needed to, if she potentially went into a wheelchair, which she is not. But when we construct these type of projects, we like to anticipate any future issues that might arise. I don't see any, I don't see any other issues in the, the property is a larger property, where it doesn't obstruct anyone's view, the grade is such that we should not have any water, water drainage issues. We looked at other areas in the house to potentially do this. Sometimes we'll build out a garage, that didn't work in this particular situation. That's an overview of what we're anticipating doing.
Do you ask, I'm sorry, so the waiver for a project like this, did they have your variance on?
No.
They did not? Okay, so this is, this is part of the, or the waiver would be with the town? Okay, so if a waiver, if we're good with that, can we move forward with the size and so on and so forth? Can we do, can we have approval on a two or?
Probably not.
It isn't, we care at all.
We're breaking the world barriers for per deation in the size of 40% of 35% to Section C2.
Yeah, okay.
How much thicker is it?
Well, it's square meters.
Probably 900 square feet going from your order, which is 500 square feet.
Well, 500 is if it's detached, 750 if it's detached, so 750 is normally the maximum in their proposing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, my concern was that we didn't have to show it as a public hearing, obviously that, okay? All right.
The layout that's in the package, is that the whole of the layout?
I'm sorry?
The layout that's in our supplemental package?
Yes, yes, that's right.
The ramp, I have it must go along the side of the, maybe that's until, out the...
Right, it's essentially not a ramp, it's not a visible ramp we're building in a grave. The pitch on the property is such, so that they, there's a, there's a grade change on the back, so we got lucky there, there's an existing walkway there, so we can enter right into the addition at that level, and that actually ties into the level of their house. It's kind of a strange, we got some luck going with this on there. So there won't be a visible ramp in the negatives of that, from the neighbor's point of view.
Anybody, any more questions? All right, well, we can do, we can stick around, yeah, please?
The 16-foot section is correct, right?
Yeah, it's the same.
Town of Worcester Planet Board considered a request by applicant, applicant, right Town West's plan would consider request by applicant Robert Jennifer DeVos for accessory apartment waiver for overall size associated with construction of a 916 square foot handicap accessible in-law addition to the existing single-family residence located at 457 Pineville Lane on a 0.45 acre parcel, MESBIL number 050-03-6-74. The plan would classify as a proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617, 5C9, the state environmental code of regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion for the approval for an accessory apartment waiver for 457 Pineville Lane. Easiest way to do this is just, because it's all in conformance, what their drawing shows, is to make it subject to zoning ordinance of 350-50 regarding accessory apartments. Key thing in there is the occupancy, it's for personal, right, your family member. It's not rented out, in other words. I think so, just put that. Utilities, it'll be the same utilities as your house, not separate utilities. Correct? Let's see, interior access, so you have an access from one section to the other, going into it?
Yes.
On your floor plan, okay. And when you're, when you've got it completed, before you get a certificate of occupancy, you will need paperwork to file this for the town, whatever. Okay, so we'll make that, that's part of it, we'll just make it such to, as I said, 350-50. All right, that be a motion, a second?
Second.
A motion, a second?
Okay, Mr. Fishani?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Mixtal?
Aye.
This is Brian.
Hi.
Okay, well, so, what do you?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, rooftop micro cell Cherry Ridge. Located at 900 and 965 Cherry Ridge Boulevard, applicant Steve Fanfuzi, Nixon P. Valley, L.L.P. attorney for Verizon Wireless, requesting a preliminary final segment approval. This is associated with the installation of a micro cell facility and associated equipment atop a building in Cherry Ridge Development at a 39.28 acre parcel on the designated parcel located in an MHR, which is a medium-high residential district under section 130-8, 130-1, voted, Tom, what's it, gentlemen?
Thank you, good evening. Robert Bergdorff, from Law Firm, Nixon P. Valley, also admitted tonight to extend their testimonies helpful or necessary. It's Mike Crosby, who's the RF engineer for Verizon, and Will Grover, who's a site acquisition specialist for Verizon. It's an application for approvals for cell site remedy service deficiencies in the, what we call the five-mile 104 cell. It's a geographic area that is experiencing service difficulties. You probably know from previous applications by us or other cell carriers that there's limited flexibility as to where you can place one of these facilities and still make it work properly with the network. We first look for a co-location opportunity if we can before introducing the tower. In this case, we worry if we find a co-location opportunity, and that's on the rooftop, 48 square feet of the rooftop, penthouse, actually, portion of rooftop at St. Anne's Senior Home in 96 Cherry Ridge Road. You can see from the site plans, and this is up on the screen right now, showing a pair of about four-and-a-half-foot antennas mounted on the poles, roughly about 10-foot total elevation over the top of the penthouse. It's visually minimal, exhibit K has photos sent if you've looked at the application. Some minor equipment cabinets as well that are attached to the penthouse, the house electronic equipment, and that's all there is to this one. Procedurally, of course, a special use firm from the town board, we've been at the town board, they reviewed it. It also requires site tenant approval from this board, as well as counter for, of course, a secret review. So that's where we are right now, let me stop there. It's a pretty straightforward application for one of these cell sites. Let me see if the board has any questions before I go.
Something like this, is it a little like a regular cell tower then, or a regular here?
Yes, instead of being a tower, though, being attached, it's simply mounted and obstruction.
That's interesting.
It's more a filling type of a site, and so, of course, you're familiar with our traditional macro sites, like the one we have at the police department, we call that the Hart Ridge. And so we, of course, one of the town, however, I'd say, so we have various cell tower macro-type sites that provide the blanket umbrella of coverage area, but because of the building coverage deficiencies and also because of the capacity needs from those big sites being overloaded, this is more of a densification effort to fill in the existing networking areas where we had a whole coverage of capacity issues. And the coverage is related more to, in building number one and number two, Verizon, like other wireless carriers, is licensed by the FCC to operate with various service bands. We have various frequencies that our service operates on, but they're not all created equally. Our higher frequency bands, in this case, this is what we call a mid-band cover site. Our mid-band service, when we add that, this site, this site's designed to add, it'll help offload not only the existing mid-band in the area, but also the low band that gets into that area from those neighboring existing sites. So there's, there's, it's like a three-dimensional puzzle that we put together, and there's different pieces fit in different ways. This is a nice opportunity for us to use an existing structure without having to have a major effect, you know, visually.
And this will provide the same service, though, as a macro, in terms of the user? This does the same things as a regular macro would do, just as a filling?
Many of the same people, so.
So do other, this is Verizon, so any other, you have the opportunity to co-locate it? I don't want these to work.
This is not intended for, this is just for Verizon.
Filling in, basically.
Any other wireless carriers at various points in time, I'm sure they'll do fill-in type sites as well. And what we're doing doesn't prevent them from doing something similar, they just may have a different way of doing it, and we certainly can't speak for it.
And if they want to co-locate on this building, of course, we have no control over that, they would have to go to St. Anne's, and we're gonna deal with St. Anne's, and then come up before the town as well to get their approvals.
All right, well, this is a public hearing, anyways, you just went up, Ian, you want to say something?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
I guess then we'll bring it back to the board, anybody? Is you concerned with it?
No, this is a pretty popular situation throughout the county for what we, on top of buildings, which I think is a great building.
It's also St. Anne's, or the Cherry Ridge, St. Anne's, it's that way back. You won't see it. The other peak is about the same height as that Almond Gate.
Josh, would this have to go to the town board or somebody, if you do it, agency for something like this?
In terms of its, for secret?
Yes.
I don't believe that they, they did prepare themselves to be in secret.
Okay, all right, good. All right, then, in that case. Derek, you want to?
Town West's plan would consider request by applicants, Steve Fanfuzi, Nixon P. Valley, L.L.P. attorney for Verizon Wireless, micro cell facility and associated equipment atop a building in Cherry Ridge Development, located at 900-965 Cherry Ridge Boulevard, on a 39.28 acre parcel, MESBIL number 079-1-40-111. The plan would classify as a proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617, C9, the state environmental code of regulations, and therefore not subject to further review.
Second, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I have to do a preliminary, see if I do a preliminary in this? Be just as simple as, just present. Motion for preliminary, second, approval for?
Can't hear you.
Verizon rooftop, number cell, Cherry Ridge. Yeah, that's great.
Second?
A motion, is that all in favor?
Aye.
All right. For file approval? It's gonna be difficult, I'll order. I make a motion for final approval, Verizon rooftop, number cell, Cherry Ridge. Subject to preliminary approval? Thanks for presenting. Why, we could submit, can you, can you order it? Yeah, the plan, the construction would be, actually, within a year.
I'm sorry, you couldn't hear that?
Construction would be completed, started, within a year of, of this.
No, we understand, we just have the construction schedule, and it depends on when, you know, what's in front of it, but it should be done within a year.
Yeah, you should, start it, we should, we should.
Yeah, it's a big company, and we have a lot of projects going on, and this is a key stepping stone for us to get into the build plan. So, you know, of course, once we get our permits, that gets in the hopper for the build plan. But we already have all of our sites that are already in construction for 2023, so it would be in 2024, and then we would start in 2024.
You should be okay within a year, if not, you can bag.
Yeah, that sounds great.
It's just, it's just.
These are things that we don't know 100% for sure sitting here, but that sounds good sitting there, so, thank you.
All right.
Yes, a motion.
That's your motion, a second?
A second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good with that, so you're all set, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good night. And this one here is, Ian?
Me.
Yeah. Splash Car Wash Extension Approval is located at 1034 Detroit, the applicant is Ann Riley, L.L.C. attorney for Splash Car Wash. Requesting a one-year extension, site plan approval, associated construction, a 750 square foot car wash facility, associated improvements on a 2.6 acre parcel on their designated parcel located in an SCD, in a Tennessee residential district under 269-17, voted, Tom, what's it?
Good evening, everybody.
Aye.
Hi. So we've already, the zoning agreement variance, the zoning board, they extended it last month, so we're just looking for this site plan approval to be extended for another year. We're litigation, I represent the property owners, so we're in litigation, but it's very possible that we'll get this off shortly, and then we don't want to lose these approvals if we can get them extended.
So, so, okay, so the approval, you know, it's re-updated again, is that for the owners of the property or for the applicant who applied?
It was for both, it was applied to by both, the applicant and the property.
All right, so it's, it's for the car wash?
It's for the property, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's for the property, one of the, these approvals to be extended for a year for the site plan and the subject of, everything was approved last year.
Yeah, yeah, all right, because I was reading it, there's Dave Clonas, who's the original applicant. So he received approval, so this is the update for him again?
Yes.
Along Fox or whatever.
Yeah, well, the Fox has owned the property, or he's owned the property.
All right, okay, I just want to make sure we hit it. I don't have any issue with that.
I don't, there was one thing with the lighting.
Yeah, this was, the Wester was the approval. One thing I found after this was approved, with the locations that they have in Jamaica and Town Road, make the center of the polls, that the way the buildings are constructed, or the lighting is on the inside of the building, but it spills out into the road, and you read newspapers across the street, and a lot of light conditions, as it always put out. I want to make sure that that lighting is correct, and it does not leave the building. They put glass all around the wash base, they have a big tower with glass on the top, and this really, really bright pink neon lighting rips, wraps around the whole building. And that has to be, that's, they, we can't, it's like a beacon that goes off, you see it from miles away.
Well, I think, yeah, and you're, in this approval for the extension, can you add that as, to the lighting sequence addressed?
Derek, suppose we make the approval for the extension subject to them reappearing before the board for any update or whatever, prior to getting that building.
Yeah, it's definitely a little lighting.
Would you be comfortable with that? I think that's a good way to get to.
It's probably, because I can't really address the instructions.
So we'll put, we'll put the program then, that when they come in, they, they would have, when they get a document, they would have to reappear just for a short review of what they're doing.
That's why I said, the site had a lighting plan, but the lighting plan did not show these neon strips that the other facilities have. Ring the entire building, wrapped around the windows.
Probably those other locations probably didn't like that, but that's.
I wouldn't, nobody would like that.
No, I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen any of those at night, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, you could see them out of the way, you literally leave them there across the street.
There's another one, I'm not too, you know, kind of, you know, that you can replace, that you can go, look, um, really, it's possible. I haven't been by it at night, though.
No, I haven't been by it at night. But it's not a bad idea to put that in your approval, so that then they do pay attention to it. You're saying their lighting plan that they submitted last year doesn't show that?
It doesn't show.
Then they should, they should be, have to comply with what they've submitted, that's.
Well, but, see, the problem is that the lighting plan is strictly with the lighting. And again, that lighting plan, the problem is, this is a type of lighting that's one of, being put on the side of a building, you know, example, locally, as we built the country next, they have all this bright LED lighting that rings the entire part of the building, and that's not showing up through the lighting plans.
Okay, well, then.
The other issue with this place is, it's also interior lighting inside the wash base, the way they do it, they have big glass windows, and that falls outside of the street. So it's not something that would be caught on where the lighting plans, the lighting has to fulfill the building itself.
All right, well, I think.
All right, we'll just do that, we'll make that part of the resolution. All right, I'm, I'll make a motion, we approve the one-year. We have your secret again.
No, it's not.
No, that was. All right, now, with the motion, we approve the one-year extension for the splash car wash, and make that subject to, prior to receiving a building found that the applicant should reappear to the board for a review of updates on the recorded project.
Site, site and facade, please.
Yeah, site.
Site and facade.
Site and facade, wait, okay.
Since this, since this one doesn't expire until October 4th, '23, should the other one expire October 1st?
Twenty-four, one year, that's a year.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a motion, a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's it, you're ready?
Nice seeing you, how are you doing?
Still breathing. Okay.
See you later, thank you.
I guess that's it, we're all set for this? Anything else? All right, with that, I guess, thank you for coming in.
And we have a meeting on September 19th.
Yes. Yes, we have a meeting, a meeting on the 9th, that's for Fairlight, but also adding in, we have the picture board?
For, you know, for.
I don't think he pedal beach, and he'll come on the same day.
Does he come in for a concept any more?
Yeah, he did.
Okay. And now the, the.
Yeah, he got his variances. What's that?
Oh, he came by.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, that should.